We'll call the meeting to order for the Brookings County Commission for Tuesday, May 16th, 2023. Please rise for the pledge. Next on the agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule a time on the commission's agenda for an item not listed. There's a five-minute time period per person. Anyone wanting to speak during the agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during the agenda item. Any requested action item may be scheduled for a future meeting. We have two gentlemen that have signed in, but they are on the agenda for the nine o'clock, and so we'll just hold off for then. So we'll move on to number four, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second. Discussion changes? Any additions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Consent to agenda items, which includes the minutes, travel education requests, personnel, action notices, cellular authorization, and human services report. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Second. Discussion, comments? Changes on the consent agenda? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Approval of claims. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Second. Discussion on the claims. Comments, changes? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Letter B, department heads. Start with Dustin, the BCOAC.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'll start with attendance. The last meeting I attended, we had 129 in the archery range, 350 in the gun range. We've held 50 events in the building. Some of the new events that we had were the Welcome to Summer event, which I told you guys about a couple of weeks ago. I just wanted to thank everybody who attended that and helped us out. We had any law enforcement, we had some animals, a bunch of different agencies come out, let kids know what they could do this summer. It was very well attended. We had about 150 people, and everybody really enjoyed it, so we'll probably try to make that a yearly event. We also did our little rummage sale this last weekend. The weather worked in our favor. We had about 300 people through the door for that, and gave people the opportunity to get rid of some of their stuff that they had. Starting to plan the three-range shoot that we have, that we did last year with Beacon Hill and the Brookings Gun Club. So we'll start the process of that. I believe August 12th is when the date that we're going to try to hold that again. Maintenance items we've been doing around the building. I added a couple of pictures, that sidewalk that I was talking about, just to give you guys a better idea where we put that. Exit door, if we were to have an emergency in that gun range, and when they come to do any work in that, in the gun range, it's a lot easier to get in and out, so they don't ruin our thresholds and all that stuff coming through the main lobby. Also, added a couple of pictures of the classroom, the before and after with the carpet, the wood behind the TV, and we painted it just to kind of spruce it up a little bit. We did get the berm mined. We had about 12,000 pounds come out of the berm, so we're going to try to do that every three years now. We also put a fire retardant on the berm, just if the thing were to ever catch fire. I know it's probably not going to happen with the flash point of that bullet going down range, but in the case that it were, hopefully that fire retardant would help us out. I also have on the agenda that I submitted, the office space for game fishing parks that we've been talking about. I was kind of looking for direction, talking with Emmett Kaiser, who is now retiring in June. His assistant is a gal named Julie. She actually typed up, amended the agreement that you guys had in 2018, when you made an agreement with them, for an additional 180 feet, or 180 square foot of additional office space. That'd be two offices. Kind of looking, where would you like me to go with that as far as? I already have numbers. They're kind of wondering what they need from them to make this happen. One of the things is, I don't have it budgeted for this year, but they're willing to pay for half of the costs, up to $25,000 for their portion. And I know we were looking at adding some storage space for 4H, just while we have a contractor in the building. I guess I'm looking for some direction on that.
The board, what's the, what's the board say, I guess? You guys discussed that at the board level?
I think everybody's in favor of it, but it's just, do we go ahead and do it and try to find funds this year, or budget it for next year?
The board is in favor of it. It would, for the 4H, they were also in favor of more storage, of course. But it was, the GFMP are, you know, pushing this more, because they do have an individual that is currently, his office is at his residence. And they have a couple of interns that are working here in Brookings, and that's what the other office, I believe, would be mainly for, is these interns also. I guess my recommendation is to move forward if we can, somewhere in the budget, find the money. Believe we'd have to pay upfront, and then the state would reimburse us.
Yeah, they reimburse 50%. She sent me the amended agreement yesterday, so I asked for a little bit more money, because everything has increased quite a bit. So they're working on that. But if you guys were to proceed with this, we, with, that would be an additional $400 every month rent that they would pay. I believe it's, currently they're paying $27.48, and that would just be for the next five years of the 10-year agreement that you guys did in 2018. And the lease agreement is what I've attached to my report of what you guys went over in 2018, what they were going to pay. It did go up $100 as of April 1st. So they would just add that for the $27.48 per square foot for the whole year, so it'd come out to about 1,500 bucks a month that they would pay if these two offices were in place. So it'd pay itself off in about three years if they were to pay 50% of that. I wouldn't expect them to pay for the storage room that we would utilize for 4H, but I do have prices. It'd be in the ballpark of about $50,000. So yeah, whatever you guys would like me to do.
And that's the complete project.
That's the complete project, yep, yep.
And then we have, we could use building funds for this? Stacy, is that correct? So it wouldn't be, it would be stuff we have saved in building funds. If we, it's not budgeted for, but if we needed, wanted to do it, we'd have the money in the building funds to do it.
I have, with the projects that we've done, approximately about $8,000 left in the OAC building fund budget.
Thoughts?
I can make this an action item, and I've been, construction's crazy right now. So their budget year is July 1st to July 1st, so their new budget year starts July 1st. And then they, I believe, are ready to roll with it, if you guys are. But just to make it official, I can get everything lined up. I'll submit the proposal from the contractor, and then the amended agreement from the state.
I think that would make sense.
At the next meeting.
That would make sense.
Okay.
But I think we got a consensus here to go move forwards.
Okay.
Let's, let's get going.
Okay, awesome. And then that's all I had for my report, unless you guys had any questions for me.
Questions? All right, thanks Dustin.
Thanks.
Bob?
Good morning.
Good morning.
The, yesterday we held a Brookings County diversion structure meeting in room 215. We had another landowner come in. Banner's is getting real close to sending that report to us. We'd like to thank the Brookings County Sheriff's Department for, they did a drone flyover, and we, they sent us the drone footage, and I'll check with Ms. Stephenson to make sure that the commission has access to that drone flyover stuff. And it was requested that we fly over the area to show you what it, what it looks like from the air. So we've got that in the files. I was approached by the city of Aurora. You may be aware that their city administration building was declared unsafe, so they had to just bring the building down. Well, that is also where their weather, severe weather warning sirens at. So they approached my office to see if there's any possible assistance to allow them to put that back up. The old siren was on top of the building, so what they want to do now, they want to purchase a telephone pole, some sort of pole, and mount the siren on the pole. I told them that typically if a community gets a new siren, we have paid up to one-third of the cost in the past. They were estimating to be about $3,000 to $3,500. I told them I'd approach the county commission to see if we're willing to do the one-third. For this one, even though it's not a new siren, I have been approached by individuals from, from the Aurora area that they're concerned that they don't have a siren right now in this, this type of weather. I do have it, I do have a line in my budget where I, for emergency type, type situation, and I believe this would fall under that, but I wanted to check with the commission first to see. Wouldn't, we're not funding the whole thing for them, they're just asking for us to give them some assistance if at all possible.
Bob, do you know how old that siren is, or when it was, is it, with it being down, is it something that they should look at maybe updating?
I guess I, I could not answer that question. I can ask them when I, when I reply back to them, I can ask them, you know, what the age of it is. Some of the communities are installing second sirens now, because they're just literally growing, and that's going to be a community sooner or later, they're going to come back and have to, have to put another siren up probably. Just depends, I don't even, the original siren that Aurora had was an old 1950's civil defense siren, and that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about a siren here for severe weather, so. Yeah, I'll approach them on that, but I'll go ahead and commit that we're, that the county commission is willing to go up, up to one-third of the installation cost, as long as they provide receipts.
How do they do a study there to determine if there's a need for a second one? Because they've obviously had some, quite a bit of growth to the east there, and then also to the southwest. You know, I'm not sure what the range those are, what their coverage is, if, is there? Seems like in Brookings, we had an area here where they had sirens, and they would put a round circle and say, this is the carry for this. Is that something that would need to be done maybe for Aurora, and even, and even other communities? Volga, you know, they're expanding to the west quite a bit, too.
Well, that's something I could approach. Typically, Federal Signal, the company Federal Signal would do that, and they're out of Blue Earth, Missouri now. Maybe it's something I need to approach the Federal Signal people on. I could approach them as a county level and get the studies, and then provide the studies to the local communities, so.
I think that would make sense.
Okay. Aurora and Volga, I think are the two main ones. Okay? We've got a local emergency planning committee meeting on Thursday. We've got, there is a tri-state meeting, tri-states Iowa, Nebraska, Minnesota, and South Dakota, so it's actually four states. And they're meeting in Sioux Falls tomorrow, I may run down to that. I don't have a travel request in on that. The city engineer had a, had a road construction meeting on May 10th for, for government officials. We attended that as part of the emergency management side of the house. You know, obviously you've seen the construction in the city of Brookings, you need to pay attention to the, to the signs that's up. They, they recommend, some people are starting to take shortcuts, and sometimes when you throw a shortcut in, depending on what size vehicle you've got, a shortcut for you may not work. They're recommending that you follow the detour signs on that. And we also need to start talking about the NACO National Conference. It's coming up in July faster than what it, what it looks like. And I plan on attending, and just to let you know, I'll have a travel request in next time on that. And last but not least, we'd like to welcome the person from PHMSA, Pipeline Hazers Materials Safety Administration. He'll be giving a presentation at 9:15, Sean Quinlan. We'd like to welcome him. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Brian?
Morning.
Morning.
Couple of things that the crew been up to. We got the 1921 building crack sealed. Been working on hauling P rock, and we got crews out pulling shoulders on County Road 10, 21, 22, and 23, preparing them for gravel. And on our construction side, it looks like we will be closing down Brookings County Road 6, beginning 5/18/2023. And that's for the Bruce Rehab, or Bruce Bridge Rehab Project that began last year. Again, that's 5/18/2023. And also working with the DOT, I received a request, again, for a road haul agreement, kind of last minute. It's kind of a smaller amount of material that's going to be coming out of a borrow pit on County Road 6. They're widening the turn, or widening Highway 81 for turn lanes. We did have a chance last year, we, we were going to work on some of the culverts on County Road 6. We did have a chance to get out there and get our culvert inventory done. So I know I haven't reached out to Mike about the road haul agreement, but I did notify the DOT that we need 30 days' notice, so you guys can consider those. But I did sign that one much like last year, when we ran into the interstate project and detouring their traffic onto our county road. And in the future, I've notified the Watertown area DOT that all those need to come in front of you guys, but I just wanted you guys to be aware of that, that that project has happened. We're talking a smaller amount of material here, but in the future, they need to bring those in front of you guys.
Date, again, you're closing down, I guess I call it the Country Club Road, for that bridge to turn into culverts?
That's kind of in limbo yet. The water levels are still a little high down there. We're probably looking at the first or second week in June on the Country Club. On the account of the water still being up.
Are we, are we putting a, some type of a detour for that portion of it?
Yes, it'll be, I'll present that to you guys before we close it down, but it's going to be much like the detour is right now currently for the 44th Street or County Road 12.
77 around, or 77 around to Booty County?
Yep, yep. So mimic that detour.
What's, what do they anticipate on the Bruce Road to be closed?
If everything goes right, month, month and a half, depending on if they can get asphalt in there for the transitions for the new guard rail. That was the latest schedule I got, but everything's kind of a moving target, as they were anticipating starting yesterday, but that didn't happen.
All right. Thanks, Brian. Sheriff?
Good morning.
Morning.
Just a quick overview of the jail. Presently, I have 31. 22 are Brookings County inmates, nine are from other counties. 24/7 areas continues to stay busy. It's up a little, participants are up a little bit. Have 110 participants. Have 43 that come in twice a day for PBTs. Have 40, 40 that are on UAs that come in. And then there are 20 from drug court, Hope Court, and DUI Court. So 60 UAs come in, so that, that area stays, always stays busy. So then later we'll, we'll have the contract with US Marshal Service, and if you have any other questions. It looks like if the, my population stays down, we're just going to start with 10 US Marshal Service. It continues to stay down, we, we can add some of the Marshal Service. So, anyway, the other thing is, is that my court deputy resigned, and I'm moving Mark Brumington, Brumington, Brugeman, who's a, who's a deputy sheriff into that position. So then that's going to short me again on the deputy side. So I'm just wondering if it'd be okay? Of course, all this happened like last week, and Thursday I moved, but he's not going in until we do get some, somebody else hired. And so I was, I missed submitting anything to you guys to go ahead with the process of hiring. I'm just wondering if there's a consensus, if I could have a consensus to go ahead and move on this? And, okay.
Yep.
And other than that, unless you guys have some questions?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Lori? Okay, thank you. Then Misty?
Good morning.
Morning.
I apologize, I just received this, actually Sunday, so I didn't get to get this in the packet. This is the Good, Bad, and Similar Looking Plant Tour. They do it every year. I'm generally involved in it more on the day of the tour. It's free to the public. Anybody's welcome to come. You need to just call and say, hey, I'm going to come, but you can carpool. They prefer you carpool, because it's on private lands. This year it's up by Sisseton and Britton. It's usually a pretty good tour. You learn a lot. You learn a lot about native plants, good plants, bad plants. It's more native than anything, and it's very interesting. I just wanted to give that to you, so you folks, you know, had the information, and if anybody needs any more information, they're welcome to get ahold of me. Also, everything's working in the weed department. We're waiting on the weeds to pop up. We found some leafy spurge yesterday, so we'll be, we'll be moving. And I think the thistles will be right behind it, so. Otherwise, unless you have some questions for me, I don't have anything else.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Also, under the finance officer's report, we have be it noted items. Actually, these noted to be for the minutes. The auditor's account for the treasurer, the payroll and additive totals, the highway expenditure report, register of deeds, statement of fees collected. All right. Okay, we'll, gotcha, all right. Well, we're a little early for nine o'clock, but our, our gentlemen are here, so we'll get started for the nine o'clock discussion and possible action. Project request. This, we'll wait for a motion to approve or anything like that after discussion, so. Go ahead and come, come forth, James. And James, state your name, and then also you have that microphone in there, so make sure you speak into it, okay?
James Dahl.
All right, welcome, James. Let us know what you're, what you're looking to do.
We're looking to to restore the Fountain Cemetery. The Fountain Cemetery is completely overgrown and, and abandoned. It was previously a, take, taken care of by the Boy, by a Boy Scout troop. However, the, the people who took care of it, they moved away. They moved out of Boy Scouts, and no one was there to take its place. For Eagle Scouts, we have to do a community project that's bigger than what we normally do, and this is, this is an option that we're doing.
So what's your request for the county? What would you like, how, what's the input for the county on this for you?
We're asking for the Aurora Fire Department to help us burn, do a controlled burn of all the overgrown grass.
Okay, and for the road, too, how's that play into it? The road, the road there, I think you had another request for some help with the road and access?
The road is unpaved and also not really used, so.
Okay. I think it's a minimum maintenance road right now. I think we have some stuff on the, up there, so. So Aurora Fire Department to do a control burn. And I, I think this is a township road, is that correct? Okay. Aurora Township. And it's minimum maintenance, so to get trucks down there, we probably need to reinforce that. And I suppose their approach off of that road to the cemetery, I mean, Larry, it's kind of near Stomp.
Yeah, the road, the road was upgraded a little bit last year, but if it, if it hasn't rained or anything, I don't, I don't think the trucks would have any problem. But as for, once the fire department gets done with their burn, you know, you might need a little bit blading or something, but I think it's a good project. It's, it started before, and there's a lot of people that go up there and look for their ancestors and stuff, and it'd be great if it would get redone, like you said, so.
Brian, is that something that we need to talk to the township with? If we were to do some blading or some improvement to that road to make access a little easier?
I don't think the township's going to argue, but I can reach out to them.
Comments? Anything, anything else? James, did you want to talk about?
The part two for this? The part two for this will be happening next year, and we would uh install a sign that shows that this has been fully re-conformed.
Comments? Brian, any comments on this?
James, I just wanna say thanks for doing this, this is a great project, wish you the best in this.
You're welcome.
Are you gonna document your stuff either by video or things like that, that maybe we can see updates on?
I uh, a cemetery map.
No video or anything like that?
We, we could do video.
Kinda get, get your name out there and. I think there'd be a lot of people in the community that would uh, would be really interested in seeing your program, um instead of just going up there, doing something.
So on the, on the screen there, can you scroll down a little bit there, that's, that's phase two, so phase one would do the fire department part of that. And then cleaning up the headstones, um and that kinda stuff, phase two then, permission to undertake the project, uh allocation of resources to a particular grading level of four hundred and seventy-seventh avenue, uh and the entrance to the cemetery, replacement gate located in, at the entrance, um so if we were to do an action item today, I'm assuming those allocation of resources and replacement gate would have to be something to consider, so.
You know, I'm not aware of what type of a gate it is, but you know, it should be replaced, and that would be our expense.
Yep.
Our contribution to it at this point would be the gate replacement.
Uh talk to me a little bit about the sign, is that gonna be at the cemetery or at the town, township road? Giving access to the.
What?
I mean, people aren't gonna drive up the road to find the cemetery if they don't see the sign on the main entrance to, to the cemetery's unimproved road.
Yeah, we could put a sign on the, at the beginning of the road.
Yeah, just to let them know it's this direction, yeah.
I'm sure the fire department will be uh careful of the gravestones and markers when they're doing their control burn.
Have you approached the fire department yet?
No, not yet.
Okay. Alright, well, um I guess I would look for a motion uh to approve uh the county's participation in this with the replacement gate and uh grading uh four seventy-seventh avenue, um from county road forty-six uh to the entrance of the cemetery, it looks like that's kind of our participation, so um I'd look for a motion.
I think we should include the uh, the signage.
Signage at the road, or at the cemetery, at the road?
Both if necessary.
Okay.
I'd make a motion.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion and a second.
Second.
Further discussion. The motion is to replace the gate located at the entrance, uh grade four seventy-seventh avenue and county road, county road forty-six and the entrance, and also provide signage uh at the road and also at the cemetery, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Alright, thanks James.
Thank you.
Good luck and thank you. Alright, we've got a few minutes left for our next nine fifteen scheduled, so we'll move on to regular business, number eight, letter A, action to approve resolution twenty-three dash twenty, a resolution approving annexation of territories by the city of Brookings, is there a motion to approve?
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, discussion. Comments?
Ryan Miller is here too, if you have any questions on it from the city.
Brian, do you have any comments on this?
Uh this is a voluntary annexation submitted by the property owner, uh Triple R Partners, it's a fifty-two point seven acre parcel just east of the current city limits, uh this one doesn't have an immediate boundary with the, the city limits, so it is using a state statute that allows municipally owned lands to count as an extension of the city limits, so uh it's adjacent to the, to the uh BMU owned property uh just east of Swithell Center, so it, it meets the statutory requirements for annexation, um planning commission did see this in May and made a recommendation of approval.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question, uh about the contiguous part of it, that if it's against BMU property or city property, does that qualify, and obviously it does, okay. Okay, discussion, any questions for Ryan, any more comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Jensen.
Aye.
Hostler. Brogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Brian. Letter B, an action to approve agreement twenty-three dash twenty-seven, an, an Office of Detention Services intergovernmental agreement between Brookings County and the US Department of Justice, United States Marshal Service, Prisoner Operation Division, is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Discussion comments. Sheriff.
I told him to come back at nine thirty, so we're ahead of schedule, so if you have any questions, we sent it over to, to uh state's attorney, and he said it was fine, so unless you guys have some question.
Comments?
We pretty much have uh, uh you know, worked with the US Marshal Service and stuff, so.
You'll start getting inmates this week prob- probably?
What's that?
When will you get, start getting inmates, probably this week, or?
Well, I think what we'll do is, you know, you know, there's probably still some along, working with the federal government, you know how that goes, so as soon as they, as soon as we sign off, and then they gotta sign off, uh and then they said they would, that they would bring us inmates slowly, they're not gonna bring us ten and just dump us on us, they'll bring a few at a time and still, but I, I will probably you know, if our numbers stay down, go ahead, I'll probably increase it a little bit, but I'll make sure that we still have our bed space and things like that, so, but this will, well, this will help pay for the facility. Unless you guys have any other questions, they did tours and looked at policies and uh they have to have TB tests and those things, our nurse will be able to do that, and so it's um also they pay thirty-six dollars an hour for any transports, if we have to take them up to the clinic or something like that, if it's an emergency, if it's not an emergency, they'll come, they'll come out of Sioux Falls and take them down to Sioux Falls for, for doctor's stuff, but.
What's the average length of sta- stay for a inmate?
Well, always they'll have somebody, in other words, uh these are all pre-trial, so we'll always have ten, you know, um if uh two get sentenced, then two more will come in, you know, so we'll always, we'll always have, uh so I really don't know what the average stay for one inmate will be, it'll be, they're all pre-trials, whenever their court dates are and stuff, but they transport, they come and get them and, and take them, but you know, we're gonna contract for ten right now, I'll, always they'll have ten, so if two get sentenced, two more will come.
Sheriff, if, if the population of the Brookings County goes higher, then you can adjust this level to go back down?
I could adjust it, yes, they, they're, they're easy to work with, when it comes to that, so I don't see that as an issue right now. Unless something happens, Dan just gave us reports, we're looking good, right? So, but you never know either, you never know what, how things change.
Well, I, I appreciate you doing this, you know, obviously this was one of my pet peeves here of trying to fill that jail up, uh if we're gonna build it, we might with local, you know, not that we wanna fill it with local people, uh but uh if we have people that are willing to pay us for those spots, I appreciate you working on this and uh and also with the surrounding counties, so, thank you.
Yep.
Alright, any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley. Jensen.
Aye.
Brogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Do it.
Letter C, action to approve agreement twenty-three dash twenty-eight, an election services agreement between Brookings County and Election Systems and Software LLC, is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, alright, discussion, comments. Lori, comments on this?
Um this contract just carry, carries over from the previous contract with just slight increase in charges.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley. Jensen.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Brogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter D, an action to approve abatement twenty-three dash eleven, an abatement application made by Charles E Dupre Trust for parcel zero four zero 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 dash one one zero four nine dash one three three dash zero zero in the amount of a hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-five cents, is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, comments, Jacob.
Both of the abatements that you have in front of you this the twelfth, twenty twenty-two, DeRachio storm, buildings that were lost, um we tried to go out there and cover every square mile we could and catch them all at the time of the storm, but these are two that uh slipped through the cracks, and the owners notified us here just recently, um that they were destroyed, we've gone out in the field and verified that they had been gone, so.
Alright, thank you, any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Letter E, action to approve abatement twenty-three dash thirteen, an abatement application made by Brandon Intermill for the parcel number five, excuse me, one five nine nine five dash zero zero two one five dash zero zero seven dash zero zero in the amount of a hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second, discussion, comments. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Thanks Jacob. Letter F, action to automatically supplement for unanticipated expense incurred and reimbursement made to Brookings County in the amount of one thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars and fifteen cents for the refund from ESRI Inc. to line item one zero one dash four dash one seven one dash four two two one, is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Second, discussion, comments.
This is just reimbursement for um the Esri contract that we have with um, I believe BMU and the city, and Esri paid us back because we overpaid on licensing, I believe, so this would just go back into the IT budget.
Any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. On to letter G, action to approve a retail on and off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License renewal for Chardonnay Inc., Vineyard Inc. Effective July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Sheriff, second, second, alright, discussion, comments.
Uh this is uh an application um that missed the, the rest of them, the packet with the rest of them, um so this would just be renewing their malt beverage license for another year.
Alright, further discussion, comments, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Alright, well, we got about four minutes, um is this interchange, or intersection mitigation measure gonna take longer than that, or should be postponed till afterwards? Um let's go to, let's go to letter I, and we'll look at these here real quick, and then we'll circle back around for the nine fifteen. Letter I, action to declare a file cabinet as surplus property to be transferred to the city of Brookings Parks and Recreation and Forestry Department, is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve. Second.
Second, discussion, comments.
Um this is a cabinet that's been sitting downstairs for uh quite a few number of years, um it's coming from the Register of Deeds office, uh I checked with all of the other county department heads to see if there was a need, um nobody uh needed it or wanted it, so um this would just be to transfer it over to the city of Brookings, uh because they have a need for it.
Sounds good, any other comments or discussion? Hearing number, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Uh letter J, action to approve the closure of Broadway Avenue slash County Road twenty-three in Aurora on August fifth at seven AM to August sixth at two AM for Pickle Fest Gala Days, is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Discussion, comments.
This is an annual request uh from the city of Aurora to close down that road, they've been doing, um submitting this request for several years, and then they visit with all of the businesses to let them know and to make them aware of the detour route, um and whatnot, so.
Alright. Questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Alright, we're close enough, we're going to the nine fifteen. So uh today for the nine fifteen, we have a pipeline safety presentation, uh with us today is Sean Quinlan, Community Liaison for Central Region Operations and Standards Review Division, welcome.
Thank you very much commissioners for allowing me to come and give you a short presentation regarding pipeline safety, uh how Brookings County can possibly uh get uh grant monies for replacing aging infrastructure. Um I'd also like to thank Robert Hill for helping to facilitate this, he's been a pleasure to work with over the years and very professional. Next slide, please. So this is more of the uh, the broad overview that we would give to a national audience or a community organization that we're uh going to present to. So quite often, people don't even know what PHMSA is, so the, the acronym, so PHMSA, Pipeline Hazardous Material Safety Administration, we're one of ten administrations within the Department of Transportation, and as you can see, we're a bifurcated organization, we're split between the Office of Pipeline Safety, which I'm a part of, and then Hazmat. And Robert deals with uh, with both of us quite a bit, and I believe he has an upcoming issue with, with Hazmat as far as um an exercise coming up in July, so, uh next slide, please. Just in a nutshell, this is what our mission is for PHMSA, is to protect people and the environment by advancing the safe transportation of energy and other hazardous materials that are essential to our daily lives. Next slide. This just gives you more information about the two offices, uh of note with the Office of Pipeline Safety, you'll see at the bottom that uh our mileage that we're responsible for uh under our regulations is now increased to three point three million miles, and that will increase further next year because of the gas gathering rule, so we've inherited a lot of gas gathering operators that previously were not uh PHMSA jurisdictional, so that number is going to increase quite a bit. Next slide, please. Again, this is more for uh the national audience, but you can see the central region, I'm out of the Kansas City office, and we have a satellite office in Chicago. Um I'm responsible for the Dakotas. Um and then our headquarters is in Washington DC, and our training division and also our accident investigation division is located in Oklahoma City. Next slide, please. This is our focus, the three main areas of inspection and enforcement, accident investigation, and risk analysis with inspection and enforcement, um we inspect pipeline operators to make sure that they're meeting the standards of forty-nine CFR, one ninety-two and one ninety-five for natural gas and hazardous materials, uh we do headquarters inspections, meaning documents, and then also field investigations while looking at the pipeline facilities in the field. And when they've been determined to be in violation of Code of Federal Regulize, Regulations, we issue them a notice of non-compliance, and they can be assessed fines. Next slide, please. And then these are the tools that help us do our job, uh we issue grants, we conduct research and development, we write regulations and standards, and we conduct outreach such as this, and I'll be speaking with you later on about grants and how possibly Brookings County can qualify for available grant money. Next slide. Uh quite often when we're uh dealing with the general public, they're unsure about the regulatory lanes, and PHMSA has uh quite a narrow regulatory uh lane, and these are some of the things that we get questions on, but they're outside of our regulatory uh control, we do not approve pipeline projects, routing and siting, um we don't have control over development that is built up along the right-of-way of pipelines, and we do not issue pipeline operating permits, quite often, um these will end up going to FERC or EPA, we work with them uh on a consistent basis, and also the Army Corps of, of Engineers. Quite often, when we're dealing with the general public, they're unsure about the regulatory lanes, and PHMSA has quite a narrow regulatory lane, and these are some of the things that we get questions on, but they're outside of our regulatory control. We do not approve pipeline projects, routing and siding. We don't have control over development that is built up along the right-of-way of pipelines, and we do not issue pipeline operating permits. Quite often, these will end up going to FERC or EPA. We work with them on a consistent basis, and also the Army Corps of Engineers as well, but the majority of the siding and the routing for transmission pipelines, that goes through FERC. Next slide, please.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Okay, so if a new pipeline is coming in, how would you be involved? I see you have risk analysis. Is that your portion of it, that you would look at it and look at the risk analysis part of it?
We do risk analysis, but PHMSA has jurisdiction over the design, maintenance, operations, and then the emergency response plan. So that's, that's our lane. As far as the siding and permitting of this transmission pipeline, that has to go through FERC first, and then once they clear that hurdle, then it comes to us. It's kind of like passing the baton along, and then we look at the design, how they're going to maintain the pipeline and so forth, how they're going to inspect the pipeline. Do they have an adequate emergency response plan? And then once they pass that hurdle, then it goes on to EPA, and then EPA and the Army Corps of Engineer will do their assessment as well.
And just for your information, FERC is Federal Energy Regulatory Commission.
Right, the Department of Energy. Okay, and then we conduct outreach efforts like this, and I will be doing this all over the state of South Dakota, and for outreach, it's to provide communities with pipeline safety information that enhance public awareness and reduce excavation damages. Next slide. And this is the information when we go out to public meetings to try to educate the public, is that we want the public to understand that all regulated pipelines have something in common, that no matter the size, pressure, or operator, all PHMSA-regulated pipelines carry hazardous materials, and so we want to give them as much information as we can regarding the risks of the pipelines and what to do if they think that an emergency situation has arisen. Next slide, please.
If you had a community where a pipeline was coming in, you would, would you hold a public meeting and invite the residents and educate them there, or is this through mailing, or how?
Well, for a proposed pipeline project, again, that's, that's FERC. FERC starts off at the beginning as far as siding and permitting. We may be invited to the meeting, but it would be a FERC meeting. They would be in charge of it, and then if any questions came up regarding, well, what are, what's the design of this pipeline, what's going to be the operating pressure of the pipeline and so forth, how is this going to be maintained and so forth? We have concerns about emergency situations arising. What does the emergency plan look like? And we would be able to answer those questions because that's our regulatory lane over those particular issues. So FERC would handle the meeting, and then if we're invited, then we would be glad to participate. And then these are the tools that we give to the public as far as identifying pipelines through pipeline markers, the different shapes and sizes, but the pipeline markers have valuable information for them. It gives them information regarding who the operator is, what the product is that's in the pipeline, and a contact number in case they suspect that an emergency situation has arisen. So teach them to remove themselves from, from the area, get to a safe location, call the number that's on the pipeline marker, or if they can't remember that, to simply call nine, nine-one-one. Next slide, please. This is the information specifically for Brookings County. PHMSA has jurisdiction over the transmission pipeline operators that you see here, Northern Natural Gas, Northern Border Pipeline, Basin Electric Power Cooperative, and then the state of South Dakota would have jurisdiction over the distribution pipeline operators, Montana Dakota Utilities, Mid-American, and Northwestern. Next slide, please.
What's the difference between those, if you go back, transmission and distribution?
Yeah.
What's the difference?
I'm going to get to that in some, some later slides, but basically, transmission pipelines, those are the larger diameter pipelines that operate at higher pressures, and they're interstate pipeline systems. That, that's federal regulation, that's PHMSA. For distribution pipelines, so those smaller diameter pipelines operating at lower pressures that feed businesses and homes. And that would, of course, be under the state PUC. That would be their jurisdiction. So, and that's pretty much what, what I was going to say for, for this, this slide. The only other thing as far as right-of-ways, we get a lot of questions regarding right-of-way disputes, and PHMSA is not a party to a right-of-way agreement. That's a private agreement between the landowner and the operator. We simply have jurisdiction over the operator to make sure that they're abiding by the Code of Federal Regulations as far as how they're operating and maintaining the pipeline. So we can't get involved with private disputes, but we try to facilitate, to make sure that the, that the issue is taken care of and that there isn't a safety issue that's, that's involved in the dispute. Of course, if there is, then we would get involved in order to remedy that situation. Next slide, please. Okay, this is a shot from our National Pipeline Mapping System, the PIMA Plus, for Brookings County. As you can see, the blue line running left, left to right through Brookings County, that's the Northern Natural Gas system. I ran the, the system to see if there were any accidents and incidents, and you can see with the box there where it says map layers, there's an aqua circle there that says gas incidents, and then if you go over to Volga, up, look right there, you will also see an aqua circle right there. So in two thousand and seven, there was an excavation damage incident on this particular pipeline. So I'll, I'll get to the, the distribution here in, in a little bit. So I just wanted to let you know that usually the excavation damages occur on the distribution pipelines, the, the lower pressure ones within cities, but occasionally, they do happen on the larger transmission pipelines, and these are, these can be serious incidents, and we investigate these as soon as they occur. Next slide, please. And then this was the information that I, I gave you, Commissioner, regarding distribution lines, the smaller systems, smaller diameter pipes, lower pressure. They can be buried below ground, or they can be meter sets as well, and this would be under the jurisdiction of the South Dakota Public Utilities Commission. Next slide, please. Now we get into excavation damages. This is a graph that I created doing some investigation over from two thousand and five to two thousand and twenty-two of national numbers, just to see where excavation damages fell. It came in third place behind equipment failure and corrosion. Next slide. However, when you get to South Dakota, it changes a little bit. You can see by a long shot that the number-one cause of incidents, pipelines in the state of South Dakota has to do with excavation damages, and the number-one cause is excavators not calling South Dakota eight-one-one and getting their locates according to, to the law, and not, or not waiting for the locates and then just going out and digging anyway. Next slide, please. So PHMSA has partnered with Common Ground Alliance, CGA, the National Eight-One-One Campaign. We do it twice a year, last month with National Safe Digging Month, and then we do it again in August. August eleventh is National Eight-One-One Day, and so all the community liaisons like myself are going out to communities in their particular region, and we're educating the public about why calling eight-one-one is so important, and from the last graph that I, I showed you, it's a, it's a big issue for the state of, of South Dakota, that this is the, the biggest, biggest issue, is people not calling eight-one-one and getting their locates before digging. So we're trying to cure this particular issue. Next slide, please. And this is another reason why I've come to South Dakota. As you can see, for the, the map there on the right-hand side of the screen, there are only three states in the country that have inadequate state damage prevention law enforcement programs, Alaska, Florida, and South Dakota was deemed inadequate in their inspection last year. So PHMSA is working with state PUC and South Dakota eight-one-one in order to cure this deficiency, but in the interim, PHMSA has stepped up. We have regulatory authority to, to investigate excavation damages that occurred even on distribution systems if the operator or the excavator did not call eight-one-one and they caused damage to a pipeline system. So I have been forwarded the excavation damages that occurred in the state of South Dakota for April and screened them, and we are going to be issuing alert notice letters to these excavators that have damaged pipeline systems here in the state without calling eight-one-one. Next slide, please. And this is what we're trying to reiterate and hammer home to the, the general public, but to the excavators that are causing these damages, is you have to follow these five steps. They're required. You need to notify eight-one-one to get your locates done. That means paint on the ground or flags. You need to wait approximately two to three days. The reason why we put two to three is because some states require three-day, three days of waiting, others two. You must confirm the, the information, that you have positive response from the locator, and then also, you're confirming with the other utilities in a right-of-way, say if it's water, or electric, or cable and so forth, that they understand that an excavation project is going to be commencing soon, because quite often, other utilities will want to have one of their representatives on scene so they can monitor the construction, to make sure, of course, that the person has a valid ticket in the first place, and that they're exercising due care and caution around their, their utility. Nobody wants their utility damaged. Respect the marks. That comes in when the locate is for one area, but when an excavator is operating in an area and they need to also dig over here in, in another area, well, it's already been located, so why can't I just go ahead and dig over here? Because they say the pipeline is over here, not in this location, but they didn't know that there was another utility over there because it was only marked for this particular area, that type of a thing. So they need to stop right, right there and either have the ticket expanded or get new locates for this other, other area because it's specific for, for one area. So you have to respect where the paint is, is put down and stay in that particular area. And then also, lastly, is dig carefully. Quite often, the damages occur when an excavator fails to switch from the backhoe to hand tools when they get within, say, eighteen inches of the facility, and that's where a lot of damages occur, is you get the turn and burn of just wanting to get the project, project done quickly, and they're not exercising due care. Next slide, please. Okay, so how can you access information? So you can do that through our National Pipeline Mapping System. That's a GIS, Geographic Information System, that will give you information regarding pipeline systems in Brookings County, who the operators are, operating pressure, contact information for if you have just a general question, emergency contact information, and I've included the, that's the iPhone app screenshot. So perhaps if Robert or somebody else is out in the field and you notice somebody is digging out kind of in a rural area, you're not getting good cell reception, or you're not getting reception for, you know, iPad or something like that, which happens to our inspectors. This has been very handy that you have it on your phone, and you can immediately look up what pipeline is in this particular area. Is it a transmission line? What's the operating pressure of this? And it gives you information right on your phone. Next slide, please. And then this would be for, for your computer. Since you're government officials, the information to the left-hand side of the, the screen, where it says government official or pipeline operator, you would get access to the same information that we do at PHMSA. So all you would need to do is click on government official, and you'd have to apply for access to the system. It would just be a quick check to make sure that you are who, who you say that you are, that you are a government official and so forth, and then you're given access to the system. However, even the public can get this information. They would go through the, on the right-hand side, the general public viewer. However, they won't get the, the zoom, zoom-in level that you or I would be accessed to and some of the operating pressure information, and that's done for security reasons. Next slide, please. And this would be the face page when you log, login. The box to the left where it says apply for PIMA access, that's what you would click, click on. It takes a couple of days to get approved, and then you would immediately get access to the system, and that's just the, the one on the right, excuse me. That's about as far out as you can zoom, zoom out on, on the system. It's just an overview shot. Next slide. Where to find pipeline safety information, you can either go through Napster, the National Pipeline Association, Association, Safety Representatives Organization. Mary Xanter, who is head of the Pipeline Division for the state PUC, she's a member of, of Napster, or you can contact her directly through Public Utilities Commission. She'll give you information regarding distribution system questions. Next slide. And then getting towards, towards the end, this is the, the good part about how to get pipeline safety modernization money. So the Gas Distribution Safety and Modernization Grant, it's kind of a mouthful. We just refer to it as the Bill Grant. So basically, it's available to a municipality that owns and operates a distribution pipeline system. It's for repair, rehabilitation, or replacement of gas distribution pipelines, or to acquire equipment to reduce incidents and fatalities. So if any of you know of any communities within Brookings County that has perhaps cast iron pipe, bare steel pipe, old plastic PE pipe that they would like to have replaced, this would be a great grant for them to apply to in order to get that infrastructure replaced. Next slide, please. This is a general overview of what the criteria is of what DC is looking for in an applicant. We're assessing the risk profile of the existing pipeline system, so definitely if it's an old cast iron system, bare steel, or old PE pipe, that would satisfy that one. Job creation potential, potential benefit to disadvantaged rural and urban communities, and economic impact or growth that it might cause here within Brookings County. Next slide. So one billion dollars is available for five years. That's two hundred million dollars per year. I checked before coming up here, and there hasn't been an applicant from the state of South Dakota. So Brookings County could, could be the, the first if you have a municipality that fits the, the criteria. There's still a lot of money available for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. Next slide, please. This is the information to help you get more information about the Bill Grant. You have the, the website. If you want to ask an email question or call, or you can simply contact me, and I would be happy to facilitate for you. If you go on the website for, for grants, they're, they walk you through the process, and there are also YouTube videos there that take you step by step through the application process, and if Brookings County has a designated, designated grant writer or somebody that's very, very good at, at doing, doing it, this would be a snap for them to do because they're already familiar with, with the process. Sometimes, that's a bit of a problem with the smaller municipalities is being able to actually write the grant. So we've tried to put as much information step by step to help smaller municipalities still get through the process if they don't have a professional grant writer. Next slide, please. And then just finishing up, I'm a community liaison, and this is what we do quite often, is go around the country for outreach and, and engagement, answering questions and so, so forth, and facilitating in any way that we can in order to further pipeline safety. So if I can help you in any way with facilitating for the Bill Grants, I would be happy to do so. Next slide. This is more for a national audience, but if I'm not available, my cohort in the central region is Angela Pickett, and she would be happy to assist you as well. Next slide. Next slide. And this, I've concluded this, just about everything that I can think of for possible resources and questions that you might have relating to regulations, grants, our National Pipeline Mapping System. And again, any questions that, that you have, I would be happy to help out and get the information to you. And you have access to all of this information. Ms. Stephenson has, has the slides, so. Next slide. And we're also available on social media so you can keep track of what rules and regulations that we're putting out, events that are coming up and so forth. You can follow along on social media. Next slide. And thank you very much for your time and attention. I appreciate it. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to, to address them.
Questions for Sean. All right. Well, thank you for making the trip.
All right.
Appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Ways to come, but it's very informative and thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move back to letter H. Update on intersection mitigation measures. Discussion possible action on purchasing needed mitigation items. So we'll start with discussion first. So I think Brian and Marty were working on this.
Well, just quickly, or not quickly, but the sheriff's office, Sergeant Langstrat worked on this. We probably identified 10, 10 intersections that probably could use, you know, something to kind of warn people that it's a stop sign. Three of those though come off of, or go on to state highways, which may be difficult to, you know what? And I don't know if it's difficult, but they maintain those stop signs, you know? And of the seven, out of the 10, we, I think the, the little twirlies, they're probably okay to put on those. The only one that we thought at this point might deserve a little more, it would be the Bruce four-way stop if we wanted to put the flashing on there. That's a, that's a, that's a busy four-way stop. But again, we're going to be closing, we talked with Brian, they're closing that road down and stuff, but I think the twirlies, you know, I talked to Moody County. They seem to think that that helps on their intersections and stuff. So, you know, we're looking at probably, probably 14 twirlies to put on stop signs and at a cost. I found, I found a company that's, that Flandrew uses and it's about $60 per, I call them twirlies.
Yeah.
I don't know what the official name is for them. But you know what I'm talking about.
Yep.
The little, yeah, I call them twirlies. And they were, I guess there was a company that was selling for 99 and they found this company at 60. So you're looking under $1,000, about $840 if you bought 14 twirlies.
Okay.
So that's what we're looking at this time. You know, we did accidents. There's just not a lot of data for a lot of accidents that, there are a lot of accidents at the, at any particular intersection. So, but, so we just kind of identified the ones that have had accidents, but not a lot of accidents, if that makes sense. And some of them were high profile type intersections. Like I say, some of the ones that we're mainly more concerned about is probably some that go on to a state highway, you know, such as Highway 14 in Aurora, but they, the, the state's going to take care of that one. They're going to put the, the solar panels up and so forth, or the solar stop signs.
Okay.
I don't know if that's exactly what you want, Brian.
No, that's what we wanted to hear. So the intersection, I guess that would be up, that road going to Ponset and that one, the question, in question that we had, you're still recommending the twirlies for that one and not the?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Comments, discussion? Can do a motion too if we want to?
One question I had was, we talked at one time about rumble strips. Is that still something that we can look into or want us to stay away from or what's the thoughts on the, on the group?
I mean, that's up to the commission. Brian's got a comment when it comes to rumble strips. Were you thinking more at the, the intersection that was in question that, that we did have a complaint on?
Fog, I think the fog was the issue there that, well, I mean, I'm sure the other people are running them for other reasons, but fog would then make it difficult to see, but the rumble strips would be something that might help out with that. But Ryan, I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
My only concern is the, seems like these intersections that are having issues or, you know, have residents by them and could create a disturbance.
Okay. So when they're hitting the rumble strips, it's creating quite a bit of noise.
Could create a complaint, could.
So the recommendation would be to do the twirlies and not do any of the lit, lit ones, right? The solar panel, flashing ones. And you've identified seven of them that we could work with as of right now.
Yeah, seven intersections.
Intersections, yeah.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, yeah.
Fourteen twirlies at this point.
Comments or a motion?
Brian, you know any counties that do, they paint stop ahead on the road?
I know there's some counties out there that have tried it, but I think it's more of an ongoing maintenance issue as it gets scraped off and whatnot with the winter. And then obviously chip seal over them and I guess I can reach out and see what counties do, do that type of practice.
I know like Minnesota and Iowa, sometimes you see it, they're very noticeable. I mean, but.
Same with railroad crossings.
Yeah, similar to that, but stop ahead. I've seen those before, but we have the signs up. Do what you can do. I mean, that's right.
You know, as, as we did the research, there was a couple of accidents where someone totally blown the stop sign, but the majority of them are failure to yield after stop. You know, they just don't look for traffic that, when they, and they pull out into traffic. So, you know, it's, it's so, the stop ahead, and I think the twirlies just give may, might at least give them a little more, you know, I need to stop and maybe look for traffic. I don't know. I think any, I think at this point that's a cheap way of saying that this intersection is, is, you know.
We had a trip over to Wisconsin this weekend or something else, but anyway, I noticed some signs on the way and some things that were different. A couple of them were four-way stop ahead. So people know that it's a stop on all four intersections that, and the other one was cross-traffic does not stop. So if we had intersections where cross-traffic doesn't stop and that sign was before the stop sign or at the stop sign, that's another indication that I really need to make sure this is not a four-way stop. And then the four-way stop, obviously got to pull out knowing they're going to stop and hopefully they do. So are, are those signs that we have available on the county level? Do we make our own signs? We order everything?
We purchase them.
Yeah. You know, possibly four-way stop, four-way stop signs and additionally cross-traffic does not stop might be an issue that people stop and read those things. They're pretty obvious when I see those.
I think anything, yeah. Well, I'll continue, we'll, we'll continue the talk and, and work on some of this. But I think, I had a deputy meeting a while back and we're going to put emphasis on stop sign violations and so forth. Of course, with summertime, we have a lot of complaints in the, in the towns about stop signs. Facebook stuff and some news stuff about stop signs and.
I know that the signs are a little bit more expensive than the twirlies, but if you go south on 77 at the Coal Meyer Corner, they have twirlies up, three of them are frozen solid. They aren't moving. So they, they have an issue with maintenance on those two. So I'm not convinced that that's a temporary type of effects, but I think signage with, you know, get some costs on, on four-way stop or cross-traffic does not stop signs. It would be probably more permanent till people shoot holes in them. None of these had holes in them. That's one thing I looked at.
Yeah. But I think this is a, a good.
Start.
The twirlie's a good start.
Okay.
Like I say, I don't have a lot of data. You know, I don't have any real intersection that really, there's so many accidents there that we need to do something else, but at this point, I think that's a good start.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion that we allow sheriff to purchase or the highway department to purchase 14 of those twirlies to put on the identified stop signs.
I'll second that motion.
Second, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Number nine, Commission Directors' Report.
It did include the VSO report for both March and April. See those numbers. The other information that came out that, that our Veteran Service Officer Courtney Buehsteffen provided me with is that GDX report that comes out every, every year and it shows veterans' compensation pension coming to, into each county throughout South Dakota. And you can see that ours is increasing that, that, that amount coming into Brookings County from about 7.1 million to eight and a half million. So that's good to see. That their year runs October to September, so. And then currently 1,863 veterans that we have on the books in Brookings County. The general fund surplus for April was at 47%. That is, you know, higher than the, the 10-year average, but we'll continue to watch that as the year progresses. I'm continuing to work with Arc Inc. and Office Peeps on the office upgrades. We're moving forward on that and making progress, getting, I think we're getting close to that final design to start moving forward. HR Generalist Kristen and Wity and I went down to the SHRM conference in Yankton a couple of weeks ago. That was a good conference. Both went, there's a variety of different sessions to attend down there, so that was a good conference. Matt Peller, our Veteran Service Assistant, started last week, so he is in the office and he and Courtney have been working on things there now that we have two people in the, the Veterans Office. We did have the city and county department had lunch last Tuesday, a week ago. That's a, that's, is actually, it's a good meeting. We, not only do we have lunch, but we go around the table and kind of visit about what everybody has going on in each of their respective departments and if there's any, you know, information to share or anywhere that, you know, we could help each other out. So it, those are good. We do that about quarterly. I did meet with the city on May 10th to discuss two different railroad authorities. We have the, our regional railroad authority that Kelly and Larry are on, but then in doing research, our Deputy State's Attorney Ben Kleinjohn found that there's a regional safety authority as well that was established in 2009 between the city and the county. If you remember back then, that was when the issue with the coal trains possibly coming through town was a concern and there was discussion about putting a bypass out around the north side of town. And so the city and county found it then to, to create the safety authority under basically the same statutes. And so the discussion was to, that one hasn't met, and I don't know how long, many, 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 many years. And so the discussion was to dissolve that safety authority and then possibly bring the city of Brookings into our regional railroad authority. Right now it's the county, the city of Volga, and then we have an at-large member that happens to be the mayor from Aurora right now. But just with some change to, I think, just a, maybe a resolution change, we can have other entities join our regional railroad authority. So we're looking at that. I think the attorneys are drawing up some paperwork to dissolve the one and possibly look into adding others to the, to the other one. So we're continuing to work on that, so you may see something of, with those coming to you in the future. Also on that last Wednesday, we had a highway budget meeting, just discussing, looking at the highway budget, getting ready for our June budget meetings coming up. And then we had Joint Powers Board last Thursday, a lot of different things that we discussed there, and I'm sure maybe Kelly and Sean can give updates on that. Otherwise upcoming dates, actually first, Mike Bartley, you had had, had a discussion with Todd Kayes. We had had some discussions, I think, at our planning meeting or our work session about having a meeting with the small towns, inviting First District to be a part of that. Where does, where did we kind of land with that? And if there's, what do we need to do to move forward?
We just need to let them know what we would like them to do. I think at first their initial thought was they would run a meeting, but that's not what we wanted necessarily. It was for them to come in and do a First District presentation. So basically the ball's in our court. When do we want to do it? How do we want to do it? And how do they want to us to ask them to participate? So I think our first step is obviously, when do we want to do this? Is it a spring, summer, or fall or winter type of an event? Obviously, fall is tough with harvest, spring is tough. Is it a summer event or is it actually a winter event?
I would probably lean more towards a winter event. I think summer is hard, people are gone, vacations, whatnot. Spring and, like you said, spring and fall are hard with, with farmers who are out, out and about. So I guess I would probably lean more towards a winter event if it were me.
All right. So I think we'll do is, is we'll look at your schedule, Stacy, for things that happen in December, January, February type of a situation. Maybe it's a February type thing for next year, but we'll put together some sort of a budget for, for hosting it and some sort of a, a plan. You know, it's a great idea, but now we need to work out what do we want it to accomplish. And so I'll visit with you and we'll figure out, or anybody here, what we actually want to accomplish with the communities involved.
Okay.
Or we could turn it over to First District and let it be their show, but I don't think that's what we, our intent was.
No, I think it was, yeah, I don't think it was. I would, I think it was important to have them there so that they could present on what they could, they have to offer communities, but not necessarily have it be their meeting. Because there may be some entities that, you know, aren't dues-paying members to First District who then just wouldn't feel like they would need to be there. So I think it would maybe be an invite from the county and our meeting to run.
All right. Some of it looked like a promotional event for First District to.
Right.
Describe all, what they do for all the, the members and, and that's fine. I, I think they're part of the program, but I'm not sure they should be the program. It should be us leading.
And I think, you know, like sheriff having, you know, a presentation or something, the discussion on law enforcement in the county and those communities. I mean, I think we can come up with a number of different things where, you know, things that the county has that, that touch on those small communities as well, so. Okay. Then just upcoming dates. Open house and that information is there for you to look over. County offices are closed on, for Memorial Day on the 29th. The Safety Week is there in the middle of June. Budget hearings should be on your schedules already. I think the save the date for the Conservation District, I think that was finalized. I haven't heard from them yet, but I think you can kind of solidify that date a little bit more, that August 9th for that Conservation District tour. And then the golf outing. So I'll be thinking about who wants to golf and if you want to put a county team together this year. The only, the last thing I have is the food truck is here today, the important stuff, right? So there, they'll be here out on the south side of the building if you want to stop by after the meeting and grab some lunch.
All right. Questions for Stacy?
One question I have is, is June 19th for the county or no?
The, what's, what's that? June 19th is?
19th.
Oh, that is not, the county does not recognize that as a, as a day off for staff, no.
All right. Any more questions? All right. State's Attorney's Office, report.
Nothing to report.
All right. All right. Commissioner reports. Mr. VanderWaal.
Thank you. Sorry. Stacy said attended the joint powers meeting on Thursday. I'm still learning on that committee, but a lot of good stuff was gone over. That's all I have to report.
All right, Commissioner Bartley.
May 4th, First District had its meeting in Watertown, full board meeting in Watertown, and well-attended. Sometimes we end up with Zoom meetings where half the people are there and half the people aren't Zoomed. This time, everybody was there except for one person on Zoom, so it was good to have conversation. We went through our budgets, proposals for the next year, some staff succession planning on some retirements coming up and how we're going to handle that. I think Todd and his group has got that pretty well under control. So First District looks good financially with their new building and their payments on that are ahead of schedule, so they're doing well up at First District. The 10th, had a pre-construction meeting for the Ivy Center with IDA Construction, or IDA Architects, went over with the building committee. Their proposed plan, what IDA did, it was went out and asked the wish list, like we do with the jail, what all do you want, and how much space do you need? And sometimes those things get a little bit bigger than what we can afford. So we presented last night on the 15th to the Brookings Behavioral Health Board and staff. We invited them to come along. Ended up a 5:30 meeting until about 8 o'clock. It was a good presentation by IDA, good discussion from the board, good discussion with the staff, recognizing that this is maybe a bigger pie than we can afford. And so how can we modify that? And we've got some good suggestions. So we're not back at the driving board, so to speak, but we are making some adjustments to it and talking about how we can raise funds, or how the foundation, that Behavioral Health still has a foundation that people could donate money to and take a tax write-off. So there are all kinds of issues there that we will be trying to resolve in the next few days, or months, I should say, and get this project to bid, hopefully, at this fall. That completes my report.
Questions? Mr. Bartley. Oh, excuse me. Commissioner Jensen, no.
I don't have anything more, but okay. You want me to repeat all that?
Commissioner Jensen.
May 3rd, attended the Conservation Meeting. They're having some challenges with some part-time help, but they're getting a lot done. It's planting season, they're working on planting trees, and all the trees that people ordered are in, and they're moving right along. On May 10th, attended a 20th Street Overpass meeting on discussing landowner issues. On May 12th, I attended the Bruce Fireman's Feed. As always, the food was great. There was a few questions. Hopefully, in the future, we can have an update on the county shop. And Bruce, the fire chief, and a couple other people asked me about it. I said we were moving forward, just waiting here. So on the 16th, this morning, I was up early, attended the Optimus Breakfast, and the Optimus honored Dana Rogers as Optimus of the Year, I believe. That's all I have.
All right. Mr. Hasler.
May 11th, attended the joint powers board meeting via phone. You know, we, in that meeting, we approved some upgrades to secure our election, some of our election equipment and that. Also looked at, we've had some complaints about, it sounds like, flags and stuff not being lowered and that. And we're looking at either replacing or upgrading, fixing the flags out front of the building to make sure that we are able to honor half-staff and that. Pretty slow week. I did want to make a personal note, of course. This is Law Enforcement Appreciation Week, kicked off yesterday with the National Police Officers Memorial Day. It's a week that I just wanted to say thank you to all of our local men and women in law enforcement for their service and sacrifices, to include the sheriff's office, police department, game fish, highway patrol, UPD, and as well as the state's attorney when they take care of what the men and women on the front lines do every day.
Thank you. All right. May 4th, we had a growth partnership meeting, and things are moving along very well, working on the budget. The 8th, I met with the Growth Partnership Finance Committee to finalize that budget, bringing that to the board here next month. The 11th, I was at the PPCC POD meeting with Bob Hill. It was hosted at Brookings Health. And so everything seems to be in order there, and it was a fairly quick meeting. And then on the 16th, which was this morning, I was also up for the Respect Law Enforcement Breakfast from the Optimists. And again, congratulations to Dana Rogers for being the Law Enforcement Person of the Year, presented by our state's attorney there. So that was a good breakfast, well-attended, so. All right. Anything else? Have on the agenda next is executive session in accordance to South Dakota Civil法 1-25-2, numbers 1 and 4, personnel and contract negotiations.